All right, I am going to call this meeting to order. Sorry for the delay.
Director Assad Lucas?
Here.
Director Battistelli?
Here.
Director Goldstein?
Here.
Director Marsh Holson?
Director Potter?
Here.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Okay, rise if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Superintendent update.
I think I'll just share a little bit about the journey I've just been on to Portland, Oregon, learning more about the state of Oregon's health insurance plan for school district employees. So for about the last 20 years, they've had a mandatory statewide health insurance plan that instead of Adams 12 getting its own insurance and Kit Carson School District getting its own insurance and Aspen getting its own, the entire group of state employees with a couple of large district exceptions have all had to be part of this pool and purchase health insurance together. There wind up being a number of carriers, two main providers in Oregon, Kaiser, and then a group called Moda. But a lot of provisions that are really interesting. One is that because of this pooling effort, there's a lot of elimination of brokerage fees and administrative costs, so that comes as a savings to everyone. And in Adams 12, we spend $25 million a year paying for 95% of the premium cost for our employee-only coverage. So if there are ways that you can reduce that by even 5% a year, you're looking at more than $1 million a year in savings. In Oregon, throughout that 20-year period, they have a statutory cap that limits annual increases in health insurance premiums to 3.4%. And the broader private marketplace has been at a 9% increase, so they've substantially reduced their cost increases from both the employer and the employee side through that structure. There are occasions that to get to 3.4%, they have to make changes in plan design, deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, co-pay amounts and things like that. But a lot of what they've done in terms of cost containment is to limit all non-royal hospitals to 200% of the Medicare rate for services provided inpatient or outpatient in hospitals. And that has resulted in substantial savings in that state for insurance. So it was just an intriguing meeting for us. There were members of the Public Employees Retirement Association who were there, who currently do provide both retiree and some active employee insurance plans in the state of Colorado, so they have statutory authority to do something broader than they currently are doing. And there were representatives from CASE, CASB, CEA, the Rural Alliance. The Aurora CFO was there, a teacher from Summit School District was there. It was really a productive day and a half of learning and finding ways to move forward that can not only allow us, but other districts to spend less on healthcare. Definitely intriguing. So that's why I came scrambling in a little bit late, but we'd love to get something done here in the next couple of years. And some of those states that took four or five years of talking about it and introducing bills that weren't successful before they got over the hump, I think for us, some of our next steps are to look at other states throughout the country that have done something like this and try to cobble together a path that makes the most sense in Colorado. So productive time, more to come at a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for taking that. All right. Board of Education comments, recognition, awards and vision. Director Potter?
Thank you, President Goldstein. It's a little odd sitting here doing this for the last time after four years, but here we are. So you're going to have to bear with me. Usually I keep it quick, but tonight's a little bit, a little bit longer. So early in my term, our superintendent, Chris Godowski, shared a quote with me, a quote I'd heard many times, but this time it stuck with me in a profound way. It shaped who I am, not only as a board member, but as a leader, friend, parent and a person. He said, "Seek first to understand, then to be understood." This meant to listen before I spoke, to ask questions instead of making assumptions, and to always believe that even when we disagree, understanding is possible. But over time, I learned something difficult. Understanding only works when it's mutual. You can model it, invite it, hold space for it, but you can't make others walk that road with you. And sometimes leadership means being misunderstood because you're willing to stand where others are uncomfortable standing. There were moments during my service when I felt completely alone, but in those moments, I reminded myself why I was here. I was here so that the sophomore who stands alone for the Pledge of Allegiance knows that someone else is standing for them too. I was here so that teachers who quietly chose not to participate in a themed protest day didn't feel shame or silenced for it. I was here for the parents who were afraid to speak up because they were worried about retaliation. And I was here for every student, teacher and community member who simply wanted to be respected for thinking differently, believing differently, or being brave enough to stand alone. Because that's what leadership should protect, not conformity, but courage. True leadership is not about controlling a message or winning favor, it's about character. It's about doing what's right even when no one thanks you for it. And if that kind of leadership means standing alone sometimes, then I stand proudly. I'd rather be alone in integrity than standing surrounded by approval that costs my conscience. I want to take some time and acknowledge my husband Evan, who's handling yet another baseball practice tonight, so thank you for your strength, patience and unwavering support. To my three children, Landon, Rayland and Jordan, you are my greatest purpose in life and my daily reminder of why this work matters. Thank you for going without bedtime kisses and home-cooked dinners and homework help at times so that I could serve. Your sacrifice is not one any of you understood, and at times, it was incredibly difficult, and I am sorry for that. But my accomplishments are our accomplishments, and I hope one day you can see the difference that we made. To the voters who entrusted me with this responsibility, thank you for your confidence, your courage and your belief that my voice at this table mattered even when I felt it didn't. Your trust has meant more to me than you will ever know. Serving this community has been the hardest but most meaningful honor of my life, and my hope is that Adams 12 continues to grow into a place where courage, integrity and respect for all voices are not just talked about, but lived. To every student, parent, staff and community member watching, keep standing for what you believe in, even if you're standing by yourself, because no, you are never really standing alone. I look forward to being here one last time on December 1st for the swearing-in of the new District III Director and modeling a peaceful transfer of power by welcoming to the Adams 12 Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Potter. Director Battistelli?
So I guess I will start out with, yesterday I went to the Student and Family Resource Center tour. They were able to move to a new, much-needed facility. And it was wonderful to learn about transportation issues among our unhoused youth and migrant student populations and our foster youth and making sure that they get to their schools where they need to be. The next thing we learned about was Medicaid and SNAP, and the district provides much-needed resources to families in applying for those. I was surprised to see the length of the Medicaid application. It was stunning. I think my mortgage app kind of compared to that application. We saw, we were able to talk with some of our family liaisons, in particular for Reed. I apologize, I don't know his name, but I know he's a great source of support for our families from Afghanistan at the Thornton High School. And he's much beloved and everyone always has wonderful things to say about him, and he was celebrating some of the successes of our Afghanistani students. Finally, we were able to see some of the resources that they offer at that center, a resource closet with food, hygiene products, clothing, you know, just all of the basics. I guess the other thing I will say is that I work at CU Boulder in the School of Education, and while the faculty are very knowledgeable about public school funding in Colorado, I'm not sure that the staff have that same awareness. And so I gave my staff colleagues a quick 10-minute whirlwind tour of how school finance in Colorado works. And I have to thank Gina Lanier for being such a great educator. It took me eight years, but I think I figured it out. And so finally, I would like to, you know, we, I can't end without saying something to Director Potter, because I appreciate the sacrifice that goes into serving on the Board of Education. I appreciate the missing family dinners and not always being there for all the things we want to be there for our kids around. And so I just want to thank Director Potter for being willing to make that sacrifice, because it is a sacrifice. And also, Director Potter has made some great connections between the Adams 12 School District and the Chamber of Commerce that I think Adams 12 has benefited from. And we may not have always agreed on things or seen eye to eye, but it's always good to have that voice who doesn't align all the time. It gives you perspective and, and you learn from them. So Director Potter, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Director Battistelli. I am going to read Director Marsh Holson's words. She sent them to me. "Sorry, I'm unable to attend tonight. My job has me out of town at the National League of Cities. My comments are short tonight. I just wanted to elevate and thank the Student Family Resource Center and the work they do, as already been referred to. I think each board member was able to attend that, that opening, and it was truly eye-opening, both the need and the way, and, and in the way that because of the work Adams 12 is able to meet the needs of these students during all the times that they may need support. A big congrats to Liesel Reed and her whole team. I also want to take a moment to thank board member Potter. I appreciate her willingness to serve on this board and the voice she has brought regarding our charter schools. I wish her the best in all her future endeavors. Finally, I hope everyone has a great and warm Thanksgiving." So that's Director Marsh Holson's. And now Director Assad Lucas.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I was just gonna also speak to the Student Family Resource Center and just all the great work that many of the departments have come together to provide for students over the years, but this new location provides the space to provide those services in a more meaningful impactful way. And so, and not just for the staff, but also for community members needing it. I was able to meet with Shannon Hancock, who is the executive director of our Five Star Foundation, just to kind of dive more into needs of students and families of Adams 12, and especially with food assistance in particular, because that's a lot what they do, and just the information she shared, especially within the last month or so with the shutdown and with SNAP benefits being cut and the increase of needs for so many families and students. When I worked as a school-based therapist, we always knew before a long break was going to be rough. We're going to see a major increase in behaviors because the anxiety and the stress and the fear that students had with security, with food, with housing was really, really rough. And I think a lot of times, a first indication is to, I mean, at least back in the day, and even well before I was therapist, but, you know, they're being bad. They're being, and they're now, like, behaviors are a message and an indication of something. And it's usually our job as therapists, educators, leaders, to understand what they're trying to say and what message they're trying to give us. So with that being said, especially with the tour of the new facility, one of the, one of the things that they had is a sample of what a hotel room looks like that a family of five sometimes lives in. And again, I've been doing this work for so long, and what I don't think a lot of people understand is our families that cannot afford an apartment or housing or secure fundings for that often have to house with others and sometimes in a one-room hotel. And it's, it's just not sustainable. Kids can't really do homework there. There's sometimes safety and security issues. And so it's just really important to have that at the forefront, and especially this time of year where we might start seeing some increase in behaviors that are unpleasant and hard to maybe deal with. But again, it's, our kids are, they're trying to tell us something and definitely need to listen. But just the increase with food, there's a lot of great work that's being done by the foundation and by Food for Hope and Partnering to provide, to ensure that kids have meals for, over the break, because without that sense of security of school where they can for sure get those two meals a day, that can be really scary for kids and really hard for families. And so they have done such great work in providing that and having a big distribution tomorrow for, for meals being sent out. Food for Hope has done so much and has increased their output of support for, for many students and families. And so I just, there's a lot more information that can be shared, but definitely something to look into and try to understand all of our community members. Lastly, I just want to also thank Director Potter for her service. We were elected together the first time, and, and so, again, yeah, there's a lot of sacrifices that go into this and a lot of missed family time and, you know, trying to balance life and work and all of that with wanting to do best by kids. And so, thank you for your time and energy, and I wish the best for you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I also went to the FSOP open house. We all, we all went, all five of us. And it was really well put together to give you a full experience of what the things that they do there. And I think everybody here so far has pretty much said, you know, said it well. I also, and Director Assad Lucas, we went to a night of honor and Superintendent Godowski with the Public Education Business Coalition. They have an event every year and they, they highlight certain things that are educationally oriented. And one of the big highlights this year was they highlighted Principal Kate Klaver from STEM Launch. She was a PEBC fellow, and they provide scholarships for educators, that's, that's what they do, and, and training. Not just, it's not scholarships, it's training. They just train them how to be great educators. And they put together a really cool video, and because it was STEM Launch, they featured the Beaver Problem-Based Learning. And it was really good. And, and so there were a lot of representative students there and staff, and Rachel Callis was one of the classroom teachers that was involved in the whole problem-based learning on the Beaver. If you remember, they had a Beaver problem in the creek, Niwa Creek, and they had to figure out what to do to help the Beavers because they did not want them euthanized. And so they put this whole plan together that they actually made to fruition and they moved the Beavers. And I did hear that they moved them downstream, and I've heard there's been some issues downstream with the Beavers, but not at, not at STEM Launch anymore. But anyway, it was really, it was really great to see her honored. Yes, I too want to thank Director Potter for her service. You know, it's always great to have different perspectives. And I feel that whenever you wanted to bring something forward, we brought it to the table and discussed it. And I, I appreciate that, and I would too wish you the best luck, and I think you're still going to be in the community and we'll still see you around, so thank you. And there's a lot of sacrifices to this high-paying job. But I'll tell you, I will speak for myself, I love this role. I love being able to do this, and I think the rest of you do too. So anyway, on that note, we are going to go on to board business. And the first thing we want to do is we want to recognize a very special student. Cameron Neely is here tonight with his family, and he's here with Jody Roper, who is the principal of Thunder Vista. And I'm going to let Principal Roper say a few words. I'll just kind of prime it. There's an eighth-grade career fair every year in Adams County, and every single eighth grader in the whole county, and then a few from Broomfield too, because, you know, we have a few schools there, which I think is where you live. And they get to go to the, it's been at the Adams County Regional Park the last couple of years, and there are so many businesses and higher ed and training grounds for, for kids to explore as eighth graders so that they could start thinking about what they want to do when they graduate from high school. And if you've ever been to this event, I go every year because I really love watching it. It is such controlled chaos, but I tell you, it's valuable, and I think Cameron's going to have a little bit of a chance to share how he found it valuable because he was recognized as the top student of the Adams County Education Consortium's Career Expo. So Principal Roper, you want to say a few things? And Cameron?
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Godowski. Thank you, Board, for having us here tonight. We are super proud of Cameron. Thank you for allowing us some time to celebrate him tonight. Again, this was put on by the Adams County Consortium, and out of over 5,700 students in 47 schools, Cameron came out as the top student, so we are very proud of his success. We have his teachers here tonight as well that have supported in the Career Expo. And I know just as a school leader, I really appreciate the opportunity to bring these opportunities to our students and let the community and county see how incredible they are and really let our students see the amazing things that are out there for them as well. Would you like to say a few words?
I just thought it was a super great experience. I, I don't think it'd be possible without Ms. Roper, all my teachers, all like doing different roles, and just letting me to do that experience was awesome.
What was your favorite career that you visited?
I just liked the Air Force. I asked a lot of questions about that.
So Cameron was honored by the Adams County Commissioners too a while back at an Adams County Commissioner meeting. Cameron, but what do you think you want to do when you go on to hire things?
I want to go into law and be like a lawyer.
Good choice, good choice. So we wanted just to recognize you with just a certificate, but this is something to be so proud of, and we want to, make sure I signed it, I did, and just say thank you, and we appreciate you, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
So Cameron, as Ms. Goldstein's walking back up here, I'll just say a couple of quick things. One is, given your interest in being an attorney, just know that there's at least three attorneys in the room right now. One is Kathy Shannon, oh, four. Aaron Oberg, raise your hand. Kathy Shannon, raise your hand. Mr. Phil Spare. And then I used to be an attorney before doing this job. So if you have interest in talking to people who've done that work in the school space, and in Aaron's case, has really deep knowledge about applying that background into finance and accounting, we'd all welcome a chance to talk with you. And then I guess the other thing I'd say, it's a great gift, whether you choose law or some other profession, the gift of making a really strong, positive first impression is so important in life, and your ability to do it time after time after time, and win people over in that big setting is just so impressive. So congratulations, well done.
All right. Okay, thank you, Cameron. And you guys are welcome to stay as long as you want. I have to backtrack, sorry, because I was scrolling through the agenda and I went too far. I would like to go backwards to general public comment.
No one has signed up to address the board tonight.
All right. Now, we need to go on to board committee liaison reports, DAC and LR PAC. Is there a DAC report?
There is a DAC report. We met as a group last week, I believe, and Gina was there with us, even though she was very ill. She came to talk about some really important topics around school funding and the bond and the mill levy override and how all of those things function. And we also received an update from the subcommittee in the DAC who attended the really interesting Charter School Leaders Meeting and got some more information on how that works. And they are making slow but steady progress on the spending survey for the school accountability committees. And yeah, so they're making good progress.
Thank you. LR PAC met on November 5th, and I attended that meeting. And that was a Thursday, it was two days after the election. We obviously talked about the mill levy override passing and what that means for us. We also talked about, you know, that we are declining enrollment, that is still an ongoing factor that we're going to have to rapple with. We also talked about the rising cost of living and aging in place population. That means people are staying in their homes longer and longer and not selling them to a younger family. We talked more about enrollment numbers, and then we talked about capital plan, capital planning software. And we've talked about this with the board too, about replacement costs for capital improvements. And we've switched software, so it has a function of the amount of deferred, but we changed, we decided not to use deferred, I believe, we were talking about. We, we gave an opinion on what we wanted to use, the word deferred or...
Renewal.
Renewal, right, thank you very much. The, the group recommends renewed, okay? And we'll talk more about that as we, as we talk about what came out of that meeting. And they, that's what they gave for their recommendations. And next steps in that is to develop concrete replacement and reporting policies and share a few options with the group and come to a consensus on recommendations to bring to the board. So that's what we did. Okay. Next, go back to the original agenda. Time to recognize some of our community volunteers. So we're going to recognize two people in our community. One is Gary Maynard, and the other is Debbie Bennett. We'll honor Gary first. And Director Potter, I believe you would like to say a few words, and you have a certi- okay, you can take it from here.
All right, thank you, President Goldstein, and thank you, fellow board members, for allowing this to be added to the agenda tonight. I've always been a big believer that sometimes the quiet ones are the ones that deserve just so much attention and gratitude, and sometimes the smallest act of kindness, especially when it's done consistently and without the fanfare and the attention and all the things, it just has such an impact on our students and our community. So tonight, I'm honored to recognize one of these people, Mr. Gary Maynard. He has, without, you know, a lot of attention and fuss, put on that crossing guard vest and that stop sign in our neighborhood every day, morning and night, afternoon, multiple times in the morning and multiple times in the evening to stop traffic from flying down the road. It is a dangerous road. People love to go speeding through this road in the middle of our neighborhood. It's not, you know, close to really any school, there's not a ton of kids walking, and so there's not a lot of flashing lights to warn people to slow down within our community. And so Mr. Maynard goes out there with his vest and- and stands in the middle of the road and makes sure that every single kid crosses that road and is on the bus safely. And every kid is off that bus and crosses the road back to go home safely every afternoon. And so I have watched him stand out there every morning and afternoon as I take my kids to school, the whole time I've been on the Board. And so tonight, I found out he's been doing this since 2017, which is an incredibly long time to be out there protecting our kids, not only in my neighborhood, but in our community and our Adams 12 students. So I want to present you with this certificate. Can I go down there and give it to him? And thank you for your service. So if you want to come on up, I will give it to you. I think I'm not sure, but I think Mr. Maynard's family might want to take a picture with him, too. So just wanted to say that. If you want to. You don't have to. It just looked like you were ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maynard. There's somebody else who has been giving of their time. And I had the personal experience of having her help me walk across the street as I took my son to school at Cotton Creek Elementary. And she's did this for years. And I believe her son, Xander, are you an eighth grader now? So you're two years younger than my son. And so, and your mom keeps doing this, even though you're not at Cotton Creek anymore. So I am going to invite Principal Lizzie Gooding up to say a few words and share a few thoughts. And Debbie Bennett, please come up.
All right. Hi, I'm Lizzie Gooding, Principal at Cotton Creek, and very excited to be here tonight to honor this very special person in our community as parent, as Lori said, and then also a staff person. She's one of our class assistants in the middle part of the day, but graciously volunteers in our crosswalk. And, you know, it's rain or shine, snow or ice. I think she prides herself on the facicles when they happen in the wintertime. As you guys can see, she dresses up. That's, you can see her hair this evening down in that middle picture. The student on Twin Day wanted to be her twin and dress like her. Pretty much, if anybody else tries to cover this crosswalk, it's constant, "Where's Ms. Debbie?" "Why isn't she here?" "You're not her." "When is she back?" "Where did she go?" "I want Ms. Debbie." They really, really connect with her as a community member. And having been an admin and served in our other crosswalk down the street from the one that she's in, it is just such a special position because you really get to know the family so well. And when we think about our values in Adams 12, about kids feeling belonging and a sense of belonging, you know, she is that face that many of our students get out of bed for and want to see in the crosswalk, parents as well. She just builds a lot of deep relationships. And, you know, sometimes this role is not easy. We collaborate on texts of sometimes parents, sometimes community members, not observing the rules of the road or being the kindest sometimes to crossing guards. And so sometimes, you know, she has experienced people being unkind out their windows or dog poop on her own windshield as a result. It's, it can be a thankless job, but she does it with grace and matter-of-factness, and our SRO and our team help support. It's just, it's a big role out in the middle of the street. And our kids love her and our community loves her. And I just don't think that we would be as safe of a school or certainly having that consistent smiling face in the crosswalk. We're very proud to call you our own at Cotton Creek and know that there's just so many lives that she has touched. So thank you for your service very, very much.
And we'd like to give you this certificate of appreciation. I know that for all the hours and years you've done this, it's very small, but you have been amazing, and you're just an amazing person. Yeah, we'll get a picture like this. Okay. Just a night of recognizing service here. Our next one is recognizing Director Potter. I'll give it to Superintendent Godowski.
Thank you, Lori. Gosh, I don't know. I have on a voice there. So I've done some reflecting, and this is obviously our 75th year as a school district. I know during my tenure, I've served with at least 14 different school board members. So over the course of that 75 years, I'm expecting that there have been well over 50 who've done this work. And I would submit that over the last four years is probably one of the more challenging periods to serve on the Board of Education in that district's 75-year history. It's an easier job, a more rewarding job, when there's a lot of growth going on in the district, and that's been true of most of our history. It's easier when there's lots of resources and money coming in, and that's been true many times in our history. It's easier when there's just widespread harmony within the community and within our country. And there's been an absence of all three of those things during the four years that Courtney has served on the Board. So as you join, we are in the immediate aftermath of the pandemic and lots of challenges that we were needing to address with kids being either remote or hybrid for a long time, lots of parents having frustrations about masking requirements, quarantine requirements, hybrid versus remote. And some of those polarities have persisted and even been exacerbated during the last four years. It's been challenging. It's not the only time that we've had political polarization around education in this community and our nation. I can remember a similar time in the 80s. But it makes the job of being a Board Director much more difficult and at days less rewarding than when you do have harmony. It's been a challenging time in the funding space during this tenure. For most of the time that Courtney's been a member of the Board, we were 13th out of 15th in the region, in the region in terms of funding through Millevy overrides. When you don't have money, that complicates things. This last year, 14th out of 15. And because of those funding challenges and because of declines in enrollment that are now pervasive not only in our immediate region, throughout our state, but frankly, throughout our country, Courtney was on the Board when we had made $27.5 million in budget reductions for this year and cut 150 jobs. Those are not the fun and rewarding times of serving on the Board that I know that some folks in years past have been able to enjoy. So I'm grateful that you persisted through what's often a really challenging and thankless period of service on the Board. Even in the midst of all those challenges in term, there's three things I would highlight as, I think, significant contributions that Courtney has made during her tenure. And there are things that others on the Board have alluded to as I heard their remarks tonight. One is that she's done a really good job of being a bridge between the district and parents who often feel disenfranchised, not engaged, coming from a different point of view or frustrated with some of the things that we're doing or not doing in the district that they'd want to do differently. And I know there have been a number of occasions where I've met with some of those parents, and I know others have done the same, trying to create some deeper understanding about why we do some things or don't do some things. Those efforts aren't always successful and getting the end result to the place that parents might want. But I think it's a huge step forward that we're meeting and we're discussing, and we're not hiding and ducking in the bridge that Courtney's provided to some parents who are disaffected with the system and dissatisfied has been really a positive step forward that I hope will continue to do in the future. A second piece is in the charter space. And I know that there have been some reference to that, too, what I've been mindful about, given some interactions I've had with Courtney during the years, is that we have lots of families or a significant number of families who have students in charter schools and in district-managed schools. And they're all Adams 12 schools. But the way that we communicate, coordinate between district-managed and charter schools is not always the most effective way. And for students who are participating in after-school activities, athletics, have other things going on, that lack of coordination often makes it difficult for parents to do best in supporting the needs of their kids. And I think the awareness about that and the advocacy that we do better is starting to take hold and make some improvements in that space. And then the final thing I would highlight is the interest that Courtney's expressed throughout her tenure in having more partnerships with the business community so that we not only receive funding, but frankly, the benefits of the human capital that our business community brings and the work-based learning opportunities they can provide to our students. And it was frankly Courtney's really strong voice around providing more staff to help with work-based learning opportunities for our students that brought that element into our Millevy override plan. So it will have at each of our comprehensive high schools, Bowman and Washington Square, an assigned staff member who can do the really time-consuming work of building connections with the business community, getting students placed, working through insurance, workers' comp, all those kinds of issues that sometimes get in the way. And so that advocacy, I think, is going to result in some real tangible improvements in how we do work-based learning in the district moving forward. So with that, I am really excited to present this beautiful work of art that's been selected for Courtney in recognition of her service on the Board. It comes from a student artist at Stargate. I know that's a school that Courtney's felt a strong connection to, given her children's attendance there. And this art piece was best of show in the district jury art show this last year. Fortunately, the student artist was willing to sell this piece to us, and it's going to be a beautiful addition to your home or office, wherever you want to choose it. So if you can meet me down here, I'd like to present this artwork to you, Courtney.
Turn it around this way.
And there's a caption on here that says, "In gratitude to Courtney Potter for service to the Adams 12 Community Board of Education Director 2021-2025." Thank you, Courtney, very much for your service. Big time talent.
That is really impressive. All right. Audit presentation. I see Gina, and I believe we have our ACFER. We have somebody from Clifton, Larson, and Allen. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to be very brief. I'm here to introduce Jean-Paul Lechevalier. Did I get that right? Close. The Knight. The Knight is what that translates to. He's the assigning director for Clifton, Larson, Allen, our independent auditor. So he's here to present the results of the audit.
Sorry.
Great. Thank you. No, I've been to France, and they tell me that I'm pronouncing my last name wrong. So I don't know. But again, I'm Jean-Paul Lechevalier with Clifton, Larson, Allen, or CLA. Happy to be able to present the results of the last year's financial statement audit. So that's the year ended June 30th, 2025. So I realize at this point, we're kind of on to the year ended 2026. So my intent is to kind of go over some of the broad strokes for what was included in the audit, but not to go into too much detail unless there's any specific questions or things that we'd like to spend some more time on. So to start, I'm pleased to be able to say that we were able to issue an unmodified audit opinion, or informally referred to as a clean audit opinion. And so what that means is that after all of our audit procedures were performed, that we believe that the financial statements included within the annual comprehensive financial report are materially correct. And so really, the audit report is not to say if something's good or bad. That's really the judgment of the Board to kind of make that decision on the trajectory of the district's finances. But it's to make sure that the financial information's accurate. So that's really the intent of the audit report. So we do also review internal controls. We do if there was any concern around fraud that would be brought up, but our audit's not specifically designed to be reviewing for fraud. So a common misconception, so I do bring that up. It's also something that's kind of done, the audit's done in tandem or kind of in cooperation with management of the district. But that doesn't, we're really more of the editor of the financial statements, and the district is the author. So making sure that what's included in there, we're reviewing to make sure that it's accurate. So this is kind of the typical scope of the annual comprehensive financial report that would have all of the financial information for the last year, all of the required disclosures under governmental accounting standards. There is a slight change this year with what's included in the report in that normally the single audit report is also included within this. The single audit is an audit over federal awards. So the annual federal funding, that most of which is passed through the Colorado Department of Education. There's audit procedures performed for that. They have, the federal government, through the Office of Management and Budget, has delayed issuance of what's referred as the compliance supplement, which kind of has all of the specifics of what they want auditors to look at. They did release a draft of that, so we're probably 80%, 90% complete. But at this point, we're not able to move forward with that until the federal government releases the final version. So typically, that comes out in May. At this point, it still is not released, so we're not sure on what the timing will be for that. That's not in, specific to Adams 12. That's every government and any nonprofit or other entity that's receiving federal awards is all basically facing this delay. The required timing for that is nine months after year end. So there's still time for everything to be done within the normal kind of timeframe for that, but it is later than what the district normally has. The financial statement audit, however, that was on time with the same typical timing. And so that typically, they're presented together. But for this year, based on that timing, they're presented separately. In terms of findings and recommendations, we don't have any findings, audit adjustments, things that rose to the level of communication to the Board. As with every year, we do have best practice recommendations that we discuss with management of the district. And so that happens throughout the audit, but none of that really rose to the level to warrant the attention of the Board. So So something we bring up, but is not something that is a concern for the board. So I do have just a couple of slides just outlining some trends that you'll see within the financial statements. So the first, and not to go into too much detail on kind of how things are set up, but the district, like every other school district in Colorado, presents two sets of financial statements. One is on a long-term basis, and one is on more of a budget basis. This is showing your assets minus your liabilities. Kind of this would be the ending number on that long-term basis. So what that's going to include is all of the school buildings. It's going to include your bonds. And it's also going to include the net pension liability that relates to participation in PARA. I know that's something that we've talked about. That's been required to be presented for about the last 10 years on the district's financial statements. So if you'll see, you'll notice that all of the numbers are negative on here, though that negative number has been decreasing over the last five years. Most of that is really relating to that net pension liability. So on this slide, you'll see that that's around for fiscal year 2025, that was around $700 million, which is really why that number is negative when you have your assets minus your liabilities. That net pension liability is an actuarially calculated number by PARA. It's not something that the district could pay, even if you had $700 million that you didn't know what to do with. Doubt that would happen, but you couldn't pay it even if you wanted to. So it's really kind of more of an informational disclosure, something to be aware of that in the future, either contributions would need to increase, there'd need to be an increase in state direct payments to PARA, which is currently happening, or a decrease in benefits in order for PARA to continue funding in the long term. So that's kind of the purpose of that, but that's really more of a 30-plus-year outlook than something that's, you know, right now. I'll also bring up the net OPEB liability. You'll notice this is a much smaller number. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's not something you normally hear discussed, which is why I have a slide on it, just so you know what it means. This also relates to PARA. There's a healthcare subsidy that's also provided to retirees. And so it's basically calculated the same way as the net pension liability and goes into the financial statement. So bring it up just so you're aware of what that is. Okay, so the other thing that I wanted to talk through is the fund balance for the district. This is on that current basis, so this is going to be a lot closer to the outstanding cash balance that the district has. And what you'll see, I have it divided into two different categories here. Kind of the light blue is going to be what's included in the building fund. This is primarily the results of bond issuances. So you'll see back in fiscal year 19, there was a lot of bond proceeds sitting in the accounts. Over, you know, the next five, six years, those decrease as all of that gets spent. And then there was another bond issuance of $186 million, including the premium, in fiscal year 2025. So you'll see that there's a really big increase in the amount of the fund balance, but again, that's, a lot of that's relating to the cash that's being held relating to that debt issuance. If you look at the dark, that's really kind of excluding the bond proceeds. So you'll see fiscal year 2025 is right around the same amount that was sitting in fiscal year 2024. So that was kind of it for, you know, the hundred-some pages that the financial statements are, but did just want to give a really high-level overview of that. Again, with the single audit, normally we'd kind of talk through this in more detail, but again, it's still in draft form at this point. The district did receive around $33 million in federal awards in fiscal year 2025. There's two programs that were required to be tested, so that's what's kind of still pending finalization of that. And that's based on the federal government guidance for what programs are required to be tested each year. They have a formula. And so the nutrition cluster and then the refugee and entrance assistance grant were both the ones that were required to be tested for fiscal year 2025. At this point, we don't have any findings or question costs or concerns, but obviously, it's still preliminary at this point. There's also kind of a, two slides on required communication. I'll say there's not, this is things that were required to mention to the board at the end of our audit, but it's pretty much the same as previous years. There was a new change in accounting standard related for compensated absences. That relates to the liability for sick and vacation time, so paid time off. It wasn't an overly significant change for the district, but it did slightly change the amount that's presented. It doesn't change the district's responsibilities or how employees would take time off or be compensated for that. It just reflects what number is presented within the financial statements for that. The other thing that I want to point out is that there's no uncorrected or corrected misstatement. So the information that we received from the district was what ended up in the financial statement. So a very clean and smooth audit. There wasn't a lot of things that we needed to do in order to, you know, as the editor of the financial statements, get to the end product. So a very nice job by the district in keeping very accurate records. That's really kind of everything I have. Again, kudos to the district for very smooth, clean audit, everything on time, and just pending kind of the federal government to give the AOK to be done with this single audit as well. So I'll pause if there's any questions, comments, or discussion.
Any comments, questions, or discussions?
I just want to say kudos to Gina and Erin for another unmodified audit opinion. I think that's a pretty big deal from what I've heard, and it just goes to show how hard you work to make sure that everything is clear and transparent. So thank you for that.
Ditto. I mean, we can't thank you enough and appreciate your expertise, Erin and Gina, and your team.
It's a lot of work, and it's hard to understand. So thank you.
And I've said my thank yous to Gina and Erin before. I'll just say that they're well-deserved, the comments that board members have made. I just would also say, Jean-Paul, you and team, appreciate your work very much. I think over the course of my time, there have been years where it felt like there was frustration on one side or the other in this process because of like staffing challenges or information access. There's times that we've had to kick the can in terms of getting audits done because of things that have slowed us down. And so it just feels like it's been very, very smooth the last few years, and appreciate you and your team, and our team as well, for making it so. I did see something on that last slide that I think you moved past that referenced charter schools, I think. I just want to check base, because I haven't heard anything from Gina about this. Do we have all of our charter school audits done, too? Because I think they're like incorporated into what you do. If you could just do a quick update there. I assume everything, if they are in, is good to go there, too.
Yep. And so what's included there, it's called a group financial statement. So the district includes all of the charter schools within its financial statements. All of the charter schools have separate audits, so they issue their own separate financial statements. They have their own auditors that review that. And then our responsibility is really just reviewing the work that the auditors did in terms of, you know, they issued their report, and we're relying on their opinion in order to include that within the financial statement. So that's what that line relates to.
Thank you, Jean-Paul.
Thank you.
On to some more fun stuff. Proclamation, Adams 12 Day. Recommended action to adopt the proclamation declaring December 12, 2025 as Adams 12 Day as presented.
So moved. Second.
So this year is the 75th anniversary of our school district, and the reason that December 12th has been chosen to celebrate Adams 12 Day is because it's the 75th day of school. And when I think about how many of those years I've been a part of this district, it's more than half. Somebody made some comment about, I've been around for almost half. I'm thinking more than half. But anyway, we've, as a district, our history is very rich, and I think it's great to celebrate this. I also want to point out Raquel Williams and her crew for all the work that they've done, and Joe Fadani, on digging up all this stuff on Adams 12. And I learned a lot about how we document and store our documents. There's actually a digital document depository of all kinds of stuff, and it made me go look through some of my old pictures and share a few others. So, and I also appreciate the thoughtfulness in making sure that we did this in a way that was definitely visible, yet not costly. Because, you know, we do have to be frugal with our funds. So anyway, anybody else want to say anything?
It's exciting to celebrate 75 years of a community or educating the community and providing, not just even education, but, I mean, Adams 12 is, I think, the largest employer in Adams County.
I think so, too.
Right? Yeah. And so it's just, it started off a few schools, and now it's 56?
Correct.
Yeah, 56 schools. So it's grown and has been serving kids and community for so long, and will continue serving for many more years. So it's great to be able to celebrate.
I think one of the most exciting things about celebrating 75 years is it doesn't, I did not graduate from Adams 12. I never attended an Adams 12 school. My husband is a graduate. My children will all graduate, but I still feel like I'm part of the family, and no matter where I go in this community, somebody has a story about Adams 12. It could be something as small as, you know, they went to Chicken and Pickle, and there's an Adams 12 student that they had waiting on them, then they had an amazing experience, and how great is Adams 12? To, you know, seeing 5B paintings on cars, to, you know, whatever it is, somebody, no matter where you are in this community, you have some sort of positive story about Adams 12. And I think that's truly special and something you don't find everywhere. So great work. Superintendent Godowski, board, former boards, former employees, everyone from the last 75 years that's helped make Adams 12 such a special place.
And don't forget all the ones that graduate from here and come back and work in our district. I see one back there. And the way that these celebrations were tied in at different schools, too. And some of our schools are celebrating milestone years this year, too. And, you know, like Westlake had their 50th, and I think Northland's at 60, and maybe Thornton High is, too, or they were last year.
50.
50.
Yeah.
Right, 50. So, no, I think Northland is at 60.
Northland's at 60.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
I guess I will just say ditto to what everyone else has said. Celebrating a 75-year anniversary is a big deal, and there's also so many other things we have to celebrate this year. And to be honest with you all, I was looking for a few celebrations. I needed a win. So we have the superintendent of the year sitting over here in Colorado, our middle levy override passed. And yeah, we're just in a good place, so this feels like a good time for this sort of thing.
Director Asad Lucas.
Aye.
Director Battistelli.
Aye.
Director Goldstein.
Aye.
Director Potter.
Aye.
All right. So December 12th. Where are your Adams 12 gear? I think we'll be at Casby. Okay, next. As an action item, revision to the graduation requirements. We have talked about this, and we're going to decide how we want to vote here. And because it's a two-pronged choice, I'm going to give you guys, and the audience and everybody else, the two options. And then once I say what the two options are, one of you can make a motion to whichever option you would like to move, and then somebody has to second it, and then we'll just go from there. So option one is to revise District Policy 6340 graduation requirements to require successful completion of personal finance literacy and healthy choices courses to graduate, beginning with the class of 2029. The other option is to clarify District Policy 6340 graduation requirements that students must enroll in personal financial literacy and healthy choices courses but are not required to successfully complete these courses to graduate. So do one of you guys want to make a motion to either one of these options?
I would like to make a motion for option one, to revise District Policy 6340 graduation requirements to require successful completion of personal financial literacy and healthy choices courses to graduate, beginning with the class of 2029.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
You, second.
Second.
Okay. That's okay. All right. Would you like to speak to your motion, Director Asad Lucas?
Yeah. So put in a lot of thought about this. You know, we've had a lot of discussion and work-study in our last board meeting. Even our last board meeting, when we were discussing it up here after the presentation, one of the themes that just kept coming up is when we set a bar, our kids will rise to it. And I think we owe it to our kids. We owe it to the community to set that bar in this. I think, you know, I was talking to somebody over there, and with, so some of our clients can't have electronics, so they have to learn how to budget, right? Like, the old way. And like, it was, I mean, school financing seemed easier to understand than them trying to get a concept of budgeting and financial literacy and all that. And it's just, it's so crucial, and we talk so much about wanting to make sure our communities continue growing and being sustainable, and financial literacy is such a significant part of that. Also, for healthy choices, that is a topic that is incredibly important to me. When our kids can understand for themselves and for others, healthy choices, they can develop healthy relationships. It'd be intimate friendships, employment, whatever those relationships may look like. And again, it continues building strong communities and empowers, I mean, just overall mental health. But yeah, so that's why I think requiring this is so important, because it, we set a bar, and kids will rise to it, and we will see the benefits of it.
To Director Asad Lucas's point, I think, you know, setting a bar high is pretty important, but also when weighing both of these options, we're not making calculus required to pass. These are not classes that should be, you know, extra, require extra studying and tutoring and all of the things. And so I hope that there isn't a lot of stress from students around the fact that this is going to be a requirement, but also I appreciate that even with this being a required class to pass, parents still have the opportunity to opt out of portions. I think that can also, you know, be a little bit misleading to be like, oh, it's required, I can't opt out. But they can, and so I appreciate the thoughtfulness around that piece. And I think it sends a really important message that in order to pass this class, which is required, you have to show up to class. And if we can start building some healthy habits around the importance of being in class, I think that could go a long way district-wide, especially as we take some steps towards addressing chronic absenteeism. So that's really why I leaned towards option one as well, and I think it's, I think it's a smart choice.
So what I will say is I was probably the person who was more hesitant about option one, but not because I don't disagree that they should be requirements in the schools. It was mostly because the performance at two high schools made me a little concerned. But I think that those concerns have been alleviated. Students can opt out and opt into other alternatives. This will be taking place in 2029, and so there is ample runway time to kind of get a look at what's going on in those two schools and, you know, make sure that things are working for students the way that they should. So I am not averse to it at, you know, for any reason. And I think the deputy superintendent and the director of curriculum and the chief academic officer for- Academic Officer for listening to those concerns and responding. Thank you.
Yeah, and I too, I would, I agree, you know, you set a bar, and I guess I, I kind of have to channel my son because, well, he already took healthy choices and he did just fine in it, and personal finance definitely will be something that he's going to need. But he tends to be that person that you say, okay, this is my expectation, he will do just enough to meet that expectation, and then when you raise it a little bit, he will do just enough to do the next expectation. So, I don't think he's any different than a lot of kids, and so, you know, he was my north star on that one, but anyway, I too support option one.
I'll just elaborate a little bit more. I think the two schools that Paula's had concern about are Thornton High School and Five Star Online Academy, where the course failure rate has been high in healthy choices. We did some speculating about root cause behind that. Is it potentially that there's lots of multilingual learners at those schools and they're having a difficult time with the language and the reading assigned in those classes? Some wonder on my part about, as Courtney raised, is it about absenteeism, which I know is higher at those two schools than many of the others. There may also be things in terms of how we're delivering the courses from a presentation and content standpoint, that we can revamp to make those courses more engaging. So the commitment I made to Paula is that we'll dig into those things deeper to see what we might need to adjust so that more students are equipped to be successful, but I concur with everyone else's comments that raise on the bar on these expectations for really important classes for kids to complete successfully is the right thing to do.
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Okay. Action item, resolution, Thornton Development Authority land acquisition. We have a resolution, you've seen to, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the acquisition of real property from the Thornton Development Authority as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Just to remind you, this is the property that's just a little bit north of the existing Thornton High School. It is part of the redesign and rebuild of Thornton High, and it's on the northwest side of the campus. Did you want to talk to that, Phil?
Just briefly, this is an important part of the Thornton High School campus. It's an acquisition that district staff has worked on for many months with the city of Thornton and Thornton Development Authority. The board's been kept abreast of developments there for months, and we are scheduled for closing this Friday, so we need this official resolution to show the title company and the city that we mean business, and I strongly recommend you approve this resolution.
Comments, questions?
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
There you go. Okay, on to minutes. Recommended action, to adopt the minutes of the work-study session and regular board meetings of November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda, recommended motion to approve the personnel actions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Okay, on to the next action item. I am going to entertain a motion to recess for an executive session to receive legal advice and discuss student matters regarding an expulsion appeal pursuant to Board Policies two-point-zero, General Operating Limitations two-point-one, Treatment of Students, Their Families and Community Members, and Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four-zero-two four B and H. So, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
And then we will be returning after the executive session to make a decision on what we talk about. Okay.
What about the parents? Do we want them to come here?
I think they have to go.
Do we tell them that they can come here if they want?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody doing that?
I'm not doing it.
I can go, I can go tell them.
They're waiting somewhere.
They're waiting in the room behind us. I think Lee just said, would you go tell him, Lee? Okay.
I'll go.
Okay. Lee can go say, "We're waiting for you guys, we need to use the bathroom."
Okay, so, because what I need to say is, yeah, yes.
Courtney's going to go home and have a glass of champagne.
I always have to wonder, so what was my son doing at that time of day?
Uh huh.
Hello.
Hello. Um. I think though, like to make a, so, but how do we say, like, I'd like to make a motion in the decision of...
What's it say there?
So, to recess for executive session.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. Make a motion to, hey, to a phone.
But don't, but in an open session, one of the following motions should be made with, oh, Mitch and students name, got it, got it, got it, yeah, 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 okay, okay.
Well, there's different kinds of, there are different kinds of that, right, there's the high focus and there's the low focus.
What am I doing tomorrow?
Everything in between, right?
What's that?
I said, what am I doing tomorrow? I've got to be in Greenwood Village at Junior Achievement. I'm seven AM, so, uh...
Oh, I'm going to a Medicare seminar.
A Medicare seminar?
Maybe you should go check this out.
Yeah, I have to do it, so you're 64.
It's a little bit early for me.
Okay, we are back in, we are out of executive session. Okay, is there someone that likes to make a motion, that would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to affirm the decision of the superintendent with respect to the expulsion of the student, um, discussed. So moved.
Director Assad Lucas?
Aye.
Director Battistelli?
Aye.
Director Goldstein?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Just want to wrap up things for the meeting. Our next meeting will be on December 1st. That is not Wednesday, it's a Monday. And we will be swearing in our board members that were just elected or re-elected. And, um, the agenda's on, um, we'll be talking about, um, taking the oath of office, we'll elect officers, and we'll talk about Casby. And we will also establish, um, our tax revenue in Mill levy. Any comments, questions?